Good morning, and welcome to Wycomico County Council Legislative Session 2014-18. We begin each meeting with the Lord's Prayer and the Pledge of Allegiance for those who would care to join us.
Our Father, the Lord our Saviour, the King who come, the God we know, the Lord of this land, give us this day and deliver every word, and give us our trust as we give those trust as we receive it. In the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, the Lord is the King, the power, and glory forever. Amen. My question is to defy the United States of America, and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and all.
Okay, first on our agenda tonight, we have a proclamation. This is for the AmeriCorps 20th Year Anniversary, and it will be presented by Councilman John Hall.
George, if you'd like to come up to the podium and bring your entourage or people you have with you.
Nice to meet you, Sarah.
George, I know that in 1997, 20 years ago, you and a group from Salisbury and Wycomico County went to Philadelphia to attend the American Summit for America's Future.
We did do that, yes.
And at that summit, there were four presidents: President Clinton, Carter, Ford, Bush, Nancy Reagan, also General Colin Powell, and Dr. Ben Carson. Quite an honor to be there. I understand there weren't that quite many of -- there wasn't a great, large number of people there, but there were people from all over the United States, and you were part of that great entourage.
Wonderful experience.
I'm sure it was to be in that presence. The presidents changed a name from America Summit to President's Promise, to America's Promise. And they were charged with creating conditions for success for all young people, including the millions currently being left behind. The nation's largest partnership of its kind, bringing together nonprofits, businesses, community, education, communities, educators, and ordinary citizens. Five promises to every youth were made. Five promises for caring adults: safe places, a healthy start, an effective education, and an opportunity to serve. Thank you for your service.
Appreciate it.
Based on that, we have a proclamation which we'd like to give to you, present to you. Whereas this year marks the 20th anniversary of AmeriCorps, a national service movement that meets the most pressing needs of the community, and whereas every day in communities across America, AmeriCorps members are making a powerful impact on the most critical issues facing our nation, whether improving schools, fighting poverty, rebuilding after disasters, providing health services, preserving the environment, or supporting veterans and military families, AmeriCorps members are always getting things done. And whereas each year, more than 2,100 citizens serve over 600 national service projects as AmeriCorps members in Maryland, and since 1994, more than 21,000 Marylanders have completed an AmeriCorps Year of National Service, and whereas the 20th anniversary of AmeriCorps will recognize the most important movements in AmeriCorps history, and also look forward to its exciting future, this celebration tells the story of AmeriCorps' impact on communities and on those who serve. Through membership, it will lay the groundwork for expanding opportunities for Americans to serve their fellow man. Now therefore, it is an honor to present this proclamation in recognition of AmeriCorps' 20 years of getting things done, signed this 16th day of September 2014 by Rick Pollak, County Executive, and the County Council. Thank you very much, and thank you for your service.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Really appreciate this recognition, and I appreciate the community's support for this program. And I'm reminded that Cherie was there when we started this program. She was working with Government's Office of Social Voluntarism at the time, so she's been a part of this. And just a couple of comments to put some things in perspective. Nationally, this is the 20th birthday of AmeriCorps, so there are celebrations really throughout the country. We started the year after that, so we are beginning our 20th year, which is really very exciting for us. And we've changed a lot, in part because Corporation for Community National Service changed a lot. But there are a couple of things that I think that you might be just interested in knowing what's happened over those 20 years, and I promise you, I will not be really long. We started out as pals, Partnership for Adolescents on the Lower Shore, because we really just had members in Somerset, Wycomico, and Worcester County. We're focusing on adolescents. And then someplace along the way, when we rewrote the grant, we expanded it to the Upper and Middle Shore. So we are a shore AmeriCorps program for the state of Maryland. And at that time, we expanded from adolescents to young people. So in terms of what John read, in terms of America's Promise Alliance, our AmeriCorps members are the caring adult that some children do not have. Our AmeriCorps members provide service at a safe place in our community and other communities. If you look at the track record, about 80 percent last year, 80 percent of the AmeriCorps members that we had served in Wycomico County in various nonprofits such as Stop the Violence, Ward Museum, Salisbury Zoo. Last year, we partnered with the City of Salisbury, and I should also mention JEMs because Lori's here, and we've been partnering with JEMs for good long. And we're happy now to be partnering with you, with the City of Salisbury. In terms of where we have, where we are growing this year is, we've always focused on young people, and we're now expanding it. It may have something to do with my age, I don't know, but we're doing young people, and we're going to be doing seniors, so we're going to be doing both vulnerable populations. I do want to introduce Lynn Rising, Lynn and Sarah, I'm where Sarah is over there. They work with me and provide really office, front office space. The other thing I want you to know is that over that period of time, we have alumni based of 500 people, not just young people. Everybody thinks they have to be college students. They do not. We've had people from, you have to be 18 and so forth, 18 all the way up to 65 and older. So you don't have to just be a, this is a recruitment peal, by the way. So we have about 500 alumni. Many of them stay in this community, Sarah being one. Sarah was not from Wycomico County, but Sarah came back to Wycomico County, and we were happy that she did that. The other thing that you might be interested in knowing is that over that 20-year period of time, this grant has brought $4.5 million into the community. A lot of that has gone for stipends for AmeriCorps members, and salaries, and other items like that, service projects that AmeriCorps members have done. So we really have been in this community, trying to make a difference in the community, and I really think we have. So I really do appreciate this recognition. 20 years ago, it was really exciting, and you will remember that, I think, when President Clinton started this program, albeit controversial. And I think it really has proven to be a wonderful asset to communities, and we're very happy to be here and very happy to partner with you and the agencies that we do. So I thank you very much.
Okay. Next on our agenda, we have approval of three different sets of minutes. The first set is the minutes from September 2, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on these? I see none, all in favor of approval of the minutes from September 2, 2014. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. All right, next, we have approval of the open work session minutes from August 5, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? I see none, all in favor of approval of the minutes from September 2, 2014. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. And lastly, we have approval of the open work session minutes, Part 1, from August 19, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? I see none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes from August 5, 2014. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. And lastly, we have approval of the open work session minutes, Part 1, from August 19, 2014. Can I have a motion to approve those minutes?
Shall move.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on these? Okay. I see none, all in favor of approval of the open work session minutes, Part 1, from August 19, 2014. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Mr. Kramer?
Good morning, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the County Council, ladies and gentlemen. I've been asked to bring to the public certification one thing that council members are aware of, because it's a progress report that was sent to you by an email, and that is to give an update on the educational impact fee grants, Employee Incentive Program funded through the cooperative efforts of the County Executive's Office and the County Council in the current year's operating budget. This, by way of a report from Mr. Jack Lennox, Director of Planning and Zoning, the department in which this program is operated. Thus far, there have been, this is as of last Friday, there have been 37 grant applications submitted by 26 different applicants. 27 of these were located in unincorporated parts of the county, and 10 were within municipalities. 23 have been completed, or have completed the settlement process, meaning they've gone all through the, all the paperwork for the program, and are ready or have already obtained a building permit and begun. My memory serves, the target for this program for the current year was 72, I think. Wasn't that about correct?
Seventy-one. Seventy-four? Yeah, seventy-four.
Seventy-four, all right.
Yeah.
And, yes, so it's, it's obviously being utilized.
Great. Thank you.
The first item on the agenda for this morning is an update for the County Council on the Morris Mill Urban Services Commission Water Services District. Mr. Strasburg and representatives from George Miles and Bure.
Okay. Good morning.
Good morning.
You are in the dark here, but if you would introduce everybody.
I'm in the dark. This is Peter Bozick from George Miles and Bure, and then this is Catherine McAllister, the lead engineer on this project. I'm Wayne Strasburg, the Director of Administration. It's been some time since we updated on council and where we stand with this project, so I wanted to take this opportunity to really cover three, three areas for you. The first would be basically the project status, where we stand with regard to the, to engineering bids and prospective construction. I'll let Peter and Catherine handle that. The second part of what I'd like to update you on is what I would call the cash logistics. You'll recall that there are a lot of moving parts in terms of where the funding for this project is coming from, so I'd like to have Andy Mackel explain to you how the cash movements are going to take place on this project. It gets a little, it gets a little tortuous. And then the third is, I'll have Ed and Maureen update you on, on the borrowing resolution. We, in fact, have to, have to go through a resolution process so that we can close on the loans that we're going to take from the USDA. And I'll let, I'll let Ed, Ed Maureen update you on that. So a lot, a lot of moving parts here, but I thought it would be helpful to council to understand exactly where we are right now in this project. And with that, I'm going to let Catherine and Peter update you on, on the physical status, if you will.
On our end, on the engineering part, the design phase, what we've actually put together, the construction documents, the bid package for the contractor, that design has been completed, and permits have been obtained from the state and the federal aid agencies, both USDA and MTE. There's actually two major construction contracts as part of this overall project, labeled Contract 1 and Number 2. Contract 1 is the distribution system, is the buried pipelines that serves all the residents. Contract 2 is the elevated water tank. We've already, both projects have been out for bids. We've received bids now on the elevated water tank, and we're going through the process of making a recommendation and getting that approved. The distribution pipeline contract, those bids will be received at the end of the month for that. So that part of the engineering has progressed pretty well. We took all the different, different hurdles and things that came our way, and dealt with it. Some of the agencies gave us a little bit of twist in terms of some of the regulations and red tape with permits and wage rates and different other criteria, but that's going along. We've had some, we've had to go through, do some land acquisition, or just make sure we had property rights where we had some easements across private properties, and we're progressing well on that front, so it's going along well. The last part of what we'll have to do, and will come a year from now, is when we make arrangements for getting individual houses hooked up to the sewer system, I mean to the, to the water distribution system, excuse me, excuse me. This project's a little bit unique in that the residents, they are sharing the benefit that they are going to actually get a service from the meter pit to their, to their house. And we finally, you know, got some funding approved for that. So that's what I'd like to leave you with for right now, as it progresses.
I wanted to mention to you that the bids received on the water tower were well within the, the estimated cost that we had put forward in the project. So we're, in terms of, of budget right now, we look good for that phase of the project. And I think we're still, it appears that we're still on the timeline that we had originally talked about, so we haven't had any, haven't had any setbacks in terms of when we think we'll be able to deliver water service to the residents in that community. So so far, things are going very well.
On the, may I ask a question? Do you mind? On the water tower, since you're on that subject, weren't there a couple of different sites as a possibility for the location of that? Has that issue been resolved?
It's been resolved. Yep, we settled on one site, and we've got access to the one site.
And is that off of what, Cedar Lane?
It's off of Slab Ridge Road.
Slab Ridge, okay.
It's at the, near the end of Slab Ridge Road, near the bypass.
Okay.
Near the bypass.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions with regard to the, to the status of the, of the project itself?
Did you say that all the easements have been acquired at this point? Are you still working on some of them, or?
There may be some final touches to get some final signatures or some things recorded in the land records, but nothing that I think, no stumbling blocks that I'm aware of at this point.
Great.
You know, and, and budget, in terms of overall budget, I agree with what you're saying, that the water tank came in right, right at the budget number. When, on the distribution system, on the pipe, on the pipeline project, we're trying to incorporate some, some paving improvements, to the extent that the budget will allow. So we have some alternatives to sort of, if possible, to upgrade some of the paving and some of the, some of the nearby roads. That, that's could have an impact on our budget, and if it does come, you know, exceed our budget amount, we might be trying to do some adjustments, some of it in the budget to accommodate, you know, the best we can do in terms of upgrading the pavement in the area.
What is the completion date?
We're looking for the spring, February, March of 2016. So not this winter, but the following, following winter. And hopefully sometime next winter, you know, we'll be starting to be, we're also keeping it open, that we might hook up some people before the entire project's finished.
Now, when you get to the end of the line, as far as the project you're doing, and comes to hooking up with homes, will the folks hire their own plumbers to run from their homes to their hookup?
Well, that's, that's kind of in flux. We've kind of thought that's what it was going to be, and we were going to have sort of a standard, type of proposal or scope of work that the homeowners would use in contracting. But in talking with the funding agencies, they might want us to directly, us meaning the owner, directly hire the contractor that way. And some interesting twists that way. If we do that, you know, then we might be limited to just going to the house foundation and not getting inside the house proper. So we're, we're working through that part of it.
It's part of an ongoing negotiation with, who are we working with there, USDA?
USDA, so recently, we've got them to agree. It's not typical for them to fund it, and their first reaction was vote from the state, USDA, no, we don't pay for this, it's not eligible. We reminded them of the circumstances of the project, reminded them that from day one, when we went to both of those agencies, it was always part of the project. When they passed the legislation to approve it, it was, we're not bringing anything new on them. And, and so Farmer's Home's going to allow it, but they might tweak it in terms of whether or not the homeowner can individually hire the plumber, or whether the, the county has to be the official agent that hires the plumber. It has to do with whether you go for reimbursement, you get the money back, you pay the contractor, some of those logistics, and it's a matter of just keeping everything on the up and up, getting the best value.
Chance of balances, like things. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thanks, Peter. Again, because of the multiple funding sources, our, our cash management on this project is, is, is a bit, is a bit complicated, so I wanted Andy to walk you through that.
So I'll try to simplify it, then. Andy Mackel, Director of Finance, good morning, everyone. So this is being financed through USDA loans. There's two loans, one for 1.1 million, one for 900,000. And then USDA grants, two grants, each for 1.5 million. And there are requirements by USDA that we spend these, use these in sequence. So we have to use a loan, then use a grant, use the next loan, and then use the next grant. And the loans are not, the money is not advanced to us from the loan until we have spent it out, till we've spent all the loan money. So there's some forward funding involved, and I'll speak to that in a minute. Once we've consumed the USDA money, the state of Maryland gave us, granted us $3 million during the 2014 General Assembly. So that money then is available. There's no restrictions on when we spend that money. The restrictions are on the USDA side. Part of the complication then, just to go into the details a little bit with the USDA, when the work is done, we're presented with an invoice. We then have to submit the invoices to the USDA for approval. They then give us authorization to pay the bill. We then pay the bill, and then we submit them reports. So the contractors will then be waiting a bit for payment, and we will be on the hook to process that paperwork in a reasonable timeframe. So that adds to complication, but it gives the control to USDA on how the money is spent and in what sequence it's spent, which drives some of the relationships that we have, which you may see in the Urban Service Agreement, as to property ownership and the sequence. That's what makes it complicated. And now for forward funding, in order to cover, pay the bills before we get the loan, the actual cash from the government, because the loan has not been closed until we've spent the money, or won't be closed until we spend the money. We will come to you at the next council meeting with a resolution to transfer a million dollars from the Urban Service Fund. Urban Service has over a million and a half now in fund balance available, so we'll borrow a million from the Urban Service District. Then we will also come to you with a separate resolution to borrow a million dollars from the General Fund, and that will be a note similar to a formal loan agreement, similar to the one we did with the solid waste a number of years ago. So we'll borrow a million from the General Fund. That cash will then be transferred into this project. And so there will have, that, that will be the $2 million that we need to forward fund the project, but a loan portion, the two loans from USDA. Once we get the, we do that amount of work, and we've paid the contractors, we've closed the loan, we'll get the $2 million from the federal government, we'll repay the General Fund million dollars, and we'll then have that extra million dollars to go back into the fund balance for Urban Service. So that'll take place, two years, when the work is done, in due course. It's not a long-term loan, it's a short-term loan from the General Fund.
What's the timeline on that? How's, how's it work, timelines?
Well, the project, as you heard, was going to be completed in 16, so this funding will, will, we will have a closing on each loan individually. So as the money, the first 1.1 million is spent, then we'll have a closing, then we'll get that money, and then when we spend the next 900,000.
You get that money six months later, or?
You know, I don't know, I haven't done this.
Whenever the government feels like it's, you can send it to us?
Yes.
Okay.
But it's a short term, as opposed to five or 10 years. Certainly be in a couple of years.
It's essentially a bridge loan, John.
When will we have to take this out of General Fund, 14, 15 years?
We'll be coming to you next month to do that. It's a loan. So it's a cash, it's a loan from the General Fund to this project. That'll be next, next month, we'll do that. In order to formalize, and I'll step into perhaps the laws area a little bit here, later on in your agenda, you're going to approve a bond resolution specifically to, this is a requirement by USDA, most counties or municipalities that draw, that have a USDA loan don't have the cash reserves that we have in order to forward fund the operation. So they'd be expected to go out and borrow money in the interim, either through a bank line of credit, or a short-term note, or bonds, an actual bond sale. So the USDA then requires us to create that borrowing authority. And so that's what the resolution is later on in your agenda, to authorize the county to borrow, should it need to, to raise cash to forward fund this project. So this is a formality for USDA. We're not going to do that. We're going to fund it through Urban Service and through the General Fund. Andy, do you want to add anything to clarify that?
No, well, we've just discussed it. My understanding is that part of the loan closing is the actual issuance of a bond, which is very similar to a promissory note to the USDA. This legislation just authorizes us, in essence, to accept the loan from the USDA, and then issue a form bond or a promissory note to the USDA. This is for the full 2 million, and it'll be done in 1.1 and 900, in the sequence that you explained.
May I stand corrected? It's a bond to the, to the USDA?
Yes.
Essentially, isn't this the USDA getting the county's full faith and credit behind borrowing?
It's like a promissory note, except it's full faith and credit is behind it, so it's a form of a bond.
Right, but we're not going to the bond market.
No, yeah, that was one thing we wanted to point out when we got to it. You're also going to consider your normal general obligation bond. The bills for the USDA is almost identical, but we are not going out to the market. We already have the commitment from USDA. This is just part of the paperwork to be able to go to closing on that.
So finally, the, all of this money is going to, as it, as it's, it will flow through a project account in the federal grant fund 03, because it is primarily being funded by federal money. And when the project is complete, those assets will be transferred to the Urban Service District account, and will become the resource, the assets of the Urban Service District.
The 1 million from the General Fund, you know, we've already passed the budget for this year, so is this coming out of some fund balance? Or is it coming out of solid waste monies that are sitting there, or where is it? What piece of the General Fund?
Well, it'll come from the General Fund, fund balance. And we will also submit to you a, an amendment to the CIP at the next meeting as well to document this project. So currently, it does not appear in the CIP, and it does not appear in the budget. But it's, it's, it is a capital project, and in order to have the bonds sale or the bond resolution pass, we need to have it reflected in the Capital Improvement Plan. So we'll also submit a CIP amendment for you next, at the next meeting as well. So you'll have three resolutions, three documents at the next meeting, a CIP amendment to doc, to record this entire project as a capital project, and a resolution to transfer funds from Urban Service to this capital project, and a resolution to borrow a million dollars from the General Fund and transfer that to this capital project.
Now, we haven't seen the audit yet, and I assume probably the next council will get the audit. Could you give us an idea when we do that, how much is in the General Fund or the fund balance that we have not spent?
The fund balance at the end The fund balance at the end of 14 will be higher than the fund balance at the end of 13.
Okay. So we're in good shape to borrow that money?
Yes. Any questions on the financing side?
Okay.
If we could detail that out, just blow it over everything here. I'd like to see it written out.
Sure. Not a problem.
This is what we're going to do, when we're going to do it, how we're going to repay that. I would appreciate it for my benefit anyhow, so.
Sure, if that's helpful to council, we're happy to do that.
Maybe time lined out.
Sure, absolutely.
I realize it's very important. We've got to move on, but just so we've got some kind of track record of what we're doing and how we're paying it back.
Absolutely. Not a problem.
You want something more detailed than what's in the minutes?
Yes.
Yeah, we'll give you, we'll give you a flow chart on what's going to happen.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item on your agenda is Resolution Number 103, 2014, at the request of the county executive approving the public housing agency five-year plan submitted by the Wycomico County Housing Authority. This five-year plan was the subject of an open work session at your previous county council meeting. If the county council is prepared to approve that, it is, would be by this resolution.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 103-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? Okay. Seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 103-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
Next item for your consideration is Resolution Number 117, 2014, at the request of the county executive approving a power purchase agreement, performance guarantee agreement with SolarCity Corporation. The county has determined that using SolarCity or energy will be a cost savings benefit and will help protect the environment. The county has identified several sites on which solar panel arrays may be located that will supply alternative sources of energy with two certain county facilities. And Solar Energy Corporation has submitted a proposal for the installation and operation of said solar power energy systems, and that the proposal was accepted by the county. The attached as Exhibit B is the actual language of performance guarantee, and the agreement and the purchase guarantee agreement is attached as Exhibit B in its full language. There will be a public hearing on this project to be held on October the 7th, and that will give the public opportunity to express itself, to consider the site locations for the solar power systems.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 117-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this?
The resolution that is presented is exactly the same as the resolution that we discussed in the work session. Hasn't changed at all?
No.
Mr. President, I should add that any, should the county council make a decision on this resolution, the decision will be subject to the public hearing on October the 7th.
Sure.
Well, that's kind of where I want to go with it. I don't see why we're being asked to agree to this at this point in time till we hear the public opinion on the 7th. To me, I just feel like we should wait until after the public hearing and then bring it up.
I find it unusual that we do this. Usually have a public hearing before you approve something. Isn't that correct?
Usually, yes. I think there's precedent for matters being subject to a public hearing when, when there's time sensitivity. I don't know if there's time sensitivity with this project or not, but that's, that's usually the reason why action has been taken contingent upon a public hearing.
Nothing can happen until we do the public hearing anyway, and as we did with this situation down to prove when we approved that, that night of the public hearing. So I mean, if we wanted to wait to approve it, if we wanted to wait for the public hearing and things work out, I think that would be more in line with what we should do.
Mr. Baker?
Well, I'll let Lee address, I think, what might be the timing issue. But I want to make it plain, what all you're doing today are approving the forms that would be entered into if and when a site is selected. The public hearing is for the selection of sites, not for the documentation.
Not the contract.
No, so I mean, this same agreement would probably, will probably be used by the Board of Ed, because they were piggybacking or following our lead on the negotiations. And these forms could be used for any site where there's a, SolarCity puts in a solar farm, but no site can be selected until after they go through a public hearing and the council approves it.
When the change of sites, could the change of sites change the figures?
No. I mean, it'll change the, the language. I think one of these forms agreements shows the name of the site, and if the megawatts change, the size, it might be a 1.2, Lee can address that, or it might be 1.5 megawatt. Those numbers would change, but the price per megawatt would not change, and all the other terms would not change.
Sure. Lee Beecham, Public Works Director, Wycomico County. The sense of urgency, Bob, is the fact that there are some closing, some fund closing that SolarCity would like to do to move this project forward as quickly as possible. And those funds are available to them in September, and then they have a new funding cycle that starts. And this is what I mean by funding. This is when they go out for their, on their open market and find the investors that are going to invest in these projects. That's one sense of urgency, is that we would like to facilitate that happening. Because again, we are talking around $300,000 a year in savings to Wycomico County, just for this project. Also, the other sense of urgency is that the fact that the Board of Ed and the City of Salisbury would like to piggyback on this contract. And they have the same sense of urgency, is that they would like to take advantage of these excellent rates. Again, we're talking about energy, purchasing energy at half the price that we're purchasing it now. And again, just the savings to Wycomico County is $300,000 a year. When you start to look at the savings to the Board of Ed and to the City of Salisbury, it's significantly more. So again, I think it's very prudent that we go ahead and move forward at this time. And if the public hearing tells us that this is not a project that the public wants, then we certainly would pull it off the table at that point. But again, as Ed Baker said, this is not obligating us to anything at this point. It just allows other entities within the county to take advantage of this contract. And I think that's really where we are at this point.
And this may be the best thing since sliced bread. How did you just come, we've been told it was $111,000 a year savings. Now you just said 300.
There are two sites. One site will save $111,000. The other site will save $160,000 a year.
So we're approving both sites, is what we're asked to do?
We are approving the form.
At the public hearing.
At the, yes. The public hearing will approve the actual land lease that we're going to do. This, right now, approves us, once that land lease is approved, to sign these documents and move forward with a power purchase agreement and a, and a performance guarantee.
The, may I ask a question on that? Because the information that was handed to us, the 111 would be for the landfill borrow pit site, right?
I believe the 111 is for the Delmar Convenience Center site.
Well, that's not what it says in what was passed out to us. It only says 51,301 in year one for the Delmar Convenience Center site. It says 111, well, let's say 111,000, $111 for the landfill borrow pit. So that's only 100 and, what, 61, 71,000 dollars?
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to.
So where's the 300 coming? I have the same question. Where's the 300 coming from?
Sure, sure. And again, this is the size that we've looked at to date. Again, if we get into this project, we want to expand it, we certainly can. I may be, may have misspoken about the 300,000. Again, it's, it's north of 200,000. I'm just using round, round numbers here. So I could certainly research that some more if that's a concern.
Well, that is a concern for me. I mean, I, you know, we've gone, we've doubled the savings all of a sudden. I want to know what the exact savings will be. You know, that's why I just don't want to prove anything till I see, you know, more of it in writing.
Well, that's in the performance guarantee, which is in front of you, that it shows what the savings are going to be, and they're guaranteeing the savings based on the size of array that we're going to be installing.
Lee, I think I remember your statement pretty clearly, where you said the savings at the landfill would be 100,000 dollars. And of course, that didn't cover all the other entities. That was just one portion of it. And I recognize that as being only one portion. But I understood there were more to come, and that's where this 300,000 comes in.
Yes.
I think that was a given.
But landfill is going to be bigger than the Delmar site, though, right?
That's correct.
Wouldn't it be more safe?
We're looking for around a 2-megawatt facility there. But the way this project works, as we discussed in the public, or in the work session, we're doing a virtual net metering project. So we're taking 20 of the largest users in the county, and we're aggregating their usage together, and that's where we come up with the savings.
And again, I guess I have some questions on the contract. I've read it a couple times, and it's so much legalese, and maybe Ed can help me out. I mean, I realize Funky Bolton is the one that did this. Are there any what-if clauses? What if they go broke? What if all of a sudden these solar panels are deemed unsafe, just like the transformers for DPNL used to have the CPCs in them, that type of thing?
Sure, sure.
Who's responsible for the cleanup, that type of thing?
They're guaranteeing the performance of not only the panels, but also all the peripheral equipment that they've installed. There is a clause in there about environmental concerns. If there's any environmental issues caused by their, by their equipment, by their project, they take responsibility for that. Again, it's, the performance guarantee, I think, is just an added layer of protection over the power purchase agreement. So again, we're, it's very, it's a real strong document when you put them both together. And when you look at the backing that SolarCity has in these projects all over the country, I think we're really in a good spot for the county, for the long-term energy needs.
I'm just not comfortable at this point in time to, to agree to a 20-year lease without hearing the public's opinion from me.
This is not the lease.
Right.
Land lease is the subject of the public hearing. That's the 20-year.
That's when we hear from the public.
But we're agreeing to the terms of the lease basically here, right?
No, that's another whole document. There's a land lease agreement.
And that will, that will be brought in front of you. Again, this is, this is to allow not only Wycomico County, but the Board of Ed and the City of Salisbury to, to take advantage of these, these savings. And that, that's really what we're here to do today, is to try to get this document approved so that we can move forward with the project, should the land lease be approved by the public and by the council in the coming months.
If the Board of Ed or the City of Salisbury wants to do their own documents, or take these documents and work off of them, they're more than welcome to. We're not allowing them to do anything.
They can't use this, because they have to piggyback on procurement that we've done. And if we don't have a contract in place, there's nothing for them to piggyback on. And that's what they'd like to do. Again, they'd like to save, save the, the, basically county dollars that would have been invested to have a consultant and a, an attorney go through and do the same documents that we've done here. We're basically trying to pool our resources and consolidate our efforts to, to make one package that works for all three entities.
Did you just say this was a contract, Mr. Baker? This wasn't a contract?
Yeah, this is an agreement to purchase the power that's generated from any site. But they don't have a site yet until we approve that through the public hearing process.
And, and we vetted this. We did an RFP process, and we've done a full procurement on it. And I, I think Mr. Baker would agree that if we don't approve any document, then there's nothing for the Board of Ed or the City of Salisbury to piggyback on. There has to be a contract in place for them to piggyback on.
Is this a similar process that I believe Queen Anne's County did with their Board of Education?
Yes.
Is it the county that started out the process, and then so on?
Yeah, it's the same vendor, actually. Queen Anne's County uses SolarCity as well. And all the folks we've talked to at the Queen Anne's have been very, very happy with the project. And, and again, we're excited to see us jumping on board with it.
Lee, I appreciate your explanation of this. Mr. Baker, I appreciate your, I appreciate your explanation. And, you know, I'm ready to move forward if there's no other questions.
Let me ask one other question, because you said we're not approving a site yet, right?
That's right.
But if we look at Exhibit 2, it does have an address for the system location. So should that not, should that be deleted at this point?
Well, we actually won't sign this, because you don't have a site yet. We're approving it so that we're ready to go when the council approves the site. And I think there are a number of other sites that could be considered. Lee has picked the, and the vendor has picked the best two. But as you said, if the council does approve one of those two, we've got others. And if they want to expand the project, we've got other sites.
Yeah, and they have a very aggressive timeline. They would like to see us under construction by December and making power three to four months after that. Just, just to give you a real quick, you know, view of what's going to happen with solar in the future, you know, right now, there's some pretty lucrative renewable energy credits available for solar. And we're going to see those go for another two to three years, and then those, those renewable energy credits are not going to be available to private investors. And that's, that's where we're seeing these, these excellent energy rates, is because they do have these, these recs in place that, once they're in place, they're in place for the length of contract. But if they go away in the future, they're not going to be able to take advantage of those. And that's, that's about a 30% savings to the investor for these types of projects. So that's where we're seeing a sense of urgency to take advantage of these savings.
That timeline, Lee, is because Maryland has instituted a cap on the amount of solar that can be produced. So that's why there's, availability of those recs are going to expire.
Yes, that's correct.
Yeah.
Unlike Stevie, I'd like to move on with this. I think that anytime we can save the citizens over 300,000 dollars with something that is energy efficient and is environmentally friendly, after we've done our due diligence and we've had our work sessions on this, I think we should go ahead and move on with this.
Would we come up with the over 300,000 now? We're over 300. We were, we don't understand where we're coming, the, the figures keep escalating here.
If we save 50,000, I think it's worth it for the taxpayer.
Well, I do too. And, you know, I'm a firm, I'm a firm believer in solar power, but I'm also think that we need to have all of our ducks in a row. And, and, you know, we hear, we hear, we've heard a lot of different figures. They keep, they keep changing.
We heard 100,000 just from the landfill, is what it amounted to. And Lee, I mentioned today that there's an opportunity possibly for another 200,000. So that's 300,000. Makes sense to me.
Yep. Okay. So we've had a motion and a second. We've had plenty of discussion. All in favor of Resolution 117-2014, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Okay. And the president votes aye. Thank you all very much.
Next item for county council consideration is Resolution Number 118, 2014, at the request of the executive, confirming the reappointment of Dr. George Demko to the Board of Library Trustees.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 118-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 118-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 119, 2014, at the request of the executive, confirming the reappointment of Susan M. Bowns to the Board of Library Trustees.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 119-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? All right, seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 119-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
Next for your consideration is Resolution Number 120, 2014, at the request of the executive, confirming the appointment of Tony Nichols to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 119, or, sorry, 120-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
This, just for clarification, too, for the public, this is Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board. This is under the Tri-County Council? Or is this under?
I believe that's correct.
Right. So be, okay. Thank you.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor of Resolution 120-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 121, 2014, at the request of the executive, confirming the appointment of Stephen L. Franklin to the Lower Work, Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 121-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of Resolution 121-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 122, 2014, at the request of the executive, confirming the appointment of Christopher D. Eccleston to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 122-2014?
Shall we move?
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All in favor of Resolution 122-2014, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the president votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 123, 2014, at the request of the executive... Next is Resolution Number 123-2014 at the request of the Executive, confirming the appointment of Sandy Fitzgerald Angelo to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 123-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 123-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 124-2014, confirming the reappointment of Maria Waller to the Lower Shore Workforce Investment Board.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 124-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion?
Is she completing someone else's term? Because I was just curious that her date was changed -- or her date of the ending time of June 1st, 2018, was different than the other?
It's because hers expired June of 2014.
She was a reappointment.
Okay. So, she's a reappointment, but we're just doing it now in September versus in June? Okay. Thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All in favor of Resolution 124-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 125-2014, introduced by the President of the County Council, confirming the reappointment of Dr. Thomas G. Keaton to the Audit Committee.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 125-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 125-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 126-2014 at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of George Burbidge to the Wycomico County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 126-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a quick question. This appointment is only good until January 31st of 2015. Is that right, Mr. Baker? We have a couple of them here that are -- January 31st, 2015.
The reason we do that is the timing of the appointment. We try to keep, since they're staggered terms, we try to keep everybody on staggered terms. So, in many cases, if they're being appointed early or late in the term, we make it the end of the term for that particular position. So, it'll come up for renewal at the same time. Otherwise, just like on the other individual where the term expired in June and we appoint them in September, if we ran the term limit from September, eventually you get to the point where you don't have staggered terms anymore. So, we try to keep them on staggered terms.
So, this will come up again for possibly for reappointment very shortly?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 126-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Resolution Number 127-2014 at the request of the County Executive, confirming the appointment of Eduardo Gonzalez to the Wycomico County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 127-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 127-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 128-2014 at the request of the Executive, confirming the appointment of John Ensley to the Wycomico County Recreation and Parks Commission.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 128-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 128-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 129-2014 at the request of the Executive, confirming the reappointment of Arthur M. Cooley to the Wycomico County Ethics Commission.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 129-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this one? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 129-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 130-2014 at the request of the Executive, confirming the reappointment of J. Phillips Wright, Jr., to the Board of Appeals.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 130-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 130-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 131-2014 at the request of the Executive, confirming the reappointment of Vaughn Wimbro to the Board of Appeals.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 131-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 131-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
You've had a large number of appointees this morning, and I know you have all reviewed the background of these people who have expressed their willingness to serve the public. And there is certainly a wide range of experience and talent that we have for these many, many boards. It's inspiring. Next is Resolution Number 132-2014 at the request of the Executive, authorizing the County Executive to execute a memorandum of agreement for Crisis Intervention Team Conference Travel and Meal Reimbursement.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 132-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this?
Just a quick question. At our meeting at the Health Department on Wednesday, we approved -- this says the name, it used to be the Corps Service Agency, and the name is now going to be Wycomico Behavioral Health Council, not Authority. Mr. Baker, do we need to make any amendments in this resolution? Or I know the MOU is signed, says Authority in it, too.
I'm sorry. When was the name changed?
Just this past Wednesday, last week.
What was it changed? What was it changed?
It was just, instead of being Wycomico Behavioral Health Authority, we are now the Wycomico Behavioral Health Council. So, the last name, last word was just changed. And that was just voted on at our meeting this past Wednesday morning, on the 10th.
Then, I think to stay with that, it would help if we go ahead and just amend the 32 to read the Wycomico Behavioral Health Council.
But I guess the, you know, the MOU still has it as Authority in here, so I don't know if it really makes.
I can get them to send you a new copy of the song.
Yeah. Just, okay. I just didn't know how you wanted to handle it. I mean, our minutes haven't been approved from the meeting, but that's what we voted on at the meeting, so.
Should we approve this as amended at this point, or?
Yes, if the Council would like to. Just change the Authority to Council wherever it appears.
Okay.
Is it Council or Commission?
Council. It was Council.
Okay.
That's what we approved. As I say, the minutes have not been approved, but that's what we voted on this past, on the 10th.
Should I reintroduce it as amended? Or can we just vote on it as amended?
Let's just do a motion to amend it.
If their minutes hasn't been approved yet, does that mean it's in force?
Yes.
It is?
Minutes would not change the vote at the actual meeting.
Okay. So, would you like to make a motion for amendment?
I think we need to -- yes, I'd like to amend this, change the name on here from Wycomico Behavioral Health Authority to Wycomico Behavioral Health Council.
Okay. Is there a second for that or a second? Okay. All in favor of the amendment? Please say aye.
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 Okay. So, now, all in favor of Resolution 132-2014 as amended? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Thank you.
Next is Resolution Number 133-2014 at the request of the County Executive, declaring that Salisbury Dance Academy LLC, located at 201 West Main Street, Salisbury, Maryland, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits by virtue of their having met the criteria for eligibility of spending more than $50,000 in improvements on their property at said location.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 133-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this? See, none. All in favor of Resolution 133-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 134-2014 at the request of the Executive, declaring that DeVreco LLC, located at 115 South Division Street, Salisbury, Maryland, is eligible to receive enterprise zone benefits by virtue of the project owners having expended more than $50,000 on their property located at 115 South Division Street. Coincidentally, I had the opportunity yesterday, that's the old firehouse. I had an opportunity to tour that with one of the principals, and that's going to be exciting when it's finished. Place is built like Fort Knox.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 134-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? All right. See, none. All in favor of Resolution 134-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 135-2014 at the request of the Executive, approving a deed of easement between Wycomico County and the City of Salisbury to provide water and sewer service to parcel 499 owned by Chop Tank Electric Co-op. That's on Tax Map Number 39, located on the westerly side of Wallson Switch Road.
Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 135-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion on this?
I just had a quick question on this. We have, the next resolution basically is kind of along the same line, Mr. Baker. And in the next resolution, or the, I guess, the agreement, the exhibit, it talks about let's see, we'll not construct any structural improvements, trees or shrub plantings. And I don't seem to see that in this one. Is this right away for the paved area only? Or is this right away going to be along the grass area?
Lee can confirm it, but I think Chop Tank is the paved area.
Are you talking about the Chop Tank or the one for Allen Road?
I'm talking about the, well, the one for Chop Tank, okay, is the one that we're discussing now. But the one for Allen Road, there's an extra couple of words in that agreement, and it talks about not putting any shrub planting or any landscaping other than grass on or in the easement area. But that's not in this one. So, I guess my question was the Chop Tank one. Is that easement going to be only where the road is paved? Or are they also going to run this where there's, you know, grass and?
Yes. I believe some of that is going to be in the road bed, or at least within our easement area, so that we already have that stipulation in our easement documentations.
That they cannot plant anything except grass if there's grass in. Okay. Because I, as I say, didn't seem to spell it out in here.
Yeah. And just for the, while I'm up here, the second one, the Allen Drive, that was an emergency situation where they had a failing septic and had to tie into city services. So, that's why that looks a little different than the other one for Wallson Switch.
Okay. Now, the other piece, too, and I'm trying to remember, I think we went through this not too long ago, I asked the question at a planning commission meeting, when someone ties in for water, and I guess it would be sewer, too, for the extension that we put out to Woolworth, is there a payback to the county?
There's, it's part of the impact fee, and I believe there is some type of facility fee that is reimbursed to the county for their capacity.
Okay. That's why I wanted to make sure that that's already been looked into, too.
Yeah. That's under the Public Works Agreement with, between the city and the developer.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Lee while he's up here? Okay. So, we've had a motion and a second, all in favor of Resolution 135-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next is Resolution Number 136-2014 at the request of the Executive, approving a deed of easement between Wycomico County, Maryland and the City of Salisbury. Salisbury desires to provide sewer to property owners along the northerly side of Allen Drive, specifically parcel 44 on map 102. That's 1A, 2A, and 3A, as well as parcel 34 on Tax Map 102. Mr. Beecham has already stated the circumstances.
Okay. Can I have a motion to introduce Resolution 136-2014?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion on this?
Are these properties being annexed into the city? Or is this going to be like an urban services situation?
No. The city typically does not do any urban service. There was probably a pre-annexation agreement that was done because this was an emergency situation. So, they did a pre-annexation, provided the service contingent on annexation.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you.
And that's all I have for now. Thank you for your patience.
Well, we've had a motion and a second, all in favor of Resolution 136-2014? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye. Thank you, Matt. Mr. Baker? Looks like we are okay on time.
Yes. Because both of these are only introduction as well.
Okay.
The first item I have for the Council's consideration is the introduction of Bill Number 2014-09. It is the second step in the county's general obligation bond process. Of course, the Council approved the CIP and the capital budget. This is a general obligation bond. This is a general obligation bond, it's an act authorizing the power of the county to borrow on full faith and credit of the county, an amount not exceeding $16,525,000, and to evidence the borrowing by issue and sale from time to time of one or more series of general obligation bonds. The proceeds will be used to fund projects from the Board of Education, Wycomico County, Rose Department, Solid Waste Enterprise Fund, State's Attorney's Office, Recreation, Parks, and Tourism, and the Wycomico Youth and Civic Center, including cost of planning, design, acquisition, improvement, construction, installation, renovation, rehabilitation, and equipment of land and facilities. And the projects are set forth on, beginning on the second page and going over to the third page. This, I get is for introduction, we would propose that the public hearing be held on October the 7th to enable the county to maintain its financing schedule, looking forward to going to the bond market late this year. The final step, of course, in the whole bond process will be the passage of the bond resolution, which would come at a later date.
Okay.
And that's the time when the final decision is made as to what will be, what will be funded.
Okay.
And you make that decision.
All right, so this is for introduction, can I have a motion to introduce Legislative Bill 2014-09?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion on this?
I just needed to recap, and I think Mr. Beecham might be able to help me, or maybe not.
Nope.
The Middle River DMP site, could you just elaborate on that one? Judge Ford?
Is that a land acquisition or a long-term lease?
It'll be a land acquisition, I believe, Matt, we're still in the throes of.
Still in the negotiation.
Where that was specified.
It doesn't have to be done by November 1st in order for us to be guaranteed the money from our core engineers.
We don't get any money for the land acquisition.
I know that, but I'm saying we've got to have an agreement in place by November 1st.
Yeah, we're working with them, we're working with the state. I, I believe we're okay, Bob. I believe we're okay.
Any other questions or discussion?
Okay.
I guess I have one request. When we get the paperwork on this, Mr. Kramer or Melissa, when you have the amount we're borrowing on the list, if to the side you could put the complete amount of the whole
We could certainly do that as a separate document.
If you could do it, yeah, that would be good, you know, so. So when somebody is looking at this online, they would now, instead of someone having to go to the capital improvement budget, would know that, you know, this is just, most of these are just portions of what these projects are going to cost.
This is, in this, in most cases, this is the, this is at least a portion of the county's funding.
Right.
Of, for example, in most cases, that's a school, and many of the others in the county pays for all of it.
So it could be explained, so we know what the portions are in the future, that would be something good to say.
Good point, Joe. Thank you.
Okay, any further questions, discussion? All right, we've had a motion and a second, all in favor of introduction of Legislative Bill 2014-09, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
Next item for your consideration is the introduction of Bill 2014-10. Again, it's an act to authorize and empower the county to borrow on full faith and credit an amount not exceeding $2 million for the financing, refinancing, reimbursement of the cost of the project referred to as Morris Mill Urban Service District Water Project, with all the same language about acquisition, construction, and the bill is virtually the same, except for the description of the project as the one you just introduced. But again, I want to stress that this is not, this not mean we're going to go out and borrow $2 million on the bond market. This is, since the USDA loan is essentially on the full faith and credit of the county, and they require bond documentation for that, essentially this will authorize it if approved after a public hearing. There'll be a bond resolution, just like it is for the GO, but it basically will authorize the sale of a bond, or the giving of a bond to the USDA in return for the loan.
Okay, can I have a motion to introduce Legislative Bill 2014-10?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion or questions on this?
Would the public hearing be October 7th on this one, too, Mr. Baker?
Yes, I was going to confirm that with the Council after the introduction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we've had a motion and a second, all in favor of the introduction of Legislative Bill 2014-10, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the President votes aye.
And, if I'm correct, the Council has no problem with the introduction of the, having the public hearing on October the 7th on both of these, and as explained to you by Mr. Mack, will bring the other resolutions forward at that meeting as well.
Okay, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay, all right, now is the portion of the meeting for public comments, so if anybody has any public comments today. Sure, just step up to the podium there and please introduce yourself for the record.
Morning, Sarah Rain with the Coastal Association of Realtors. Just wanted to let everyone know that we've partnered with the Salisbury Independent to host a candidates forum on October 15th at Warwick in the Garry Auditorium. We've got Senate District 37, the Wycomico Delegates, County Executive, and County Council at Large Candidates coming, so if you could please put that on your calendars, we greatly appreciate it. This is an objective, nonpartisan event, so, and I'll give you some flyers.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, are there any other public comments? Okay, Council comments?
I have some questions.
Okay.
Okay, a couple of questions. Mr. Baker?
Yes, sir.
You said that this Solar City Agreement was sent to Funk and Bolton. Do you recall what the cost was on that?
Uh, no, I don't. There's, that funding doesn't run through my office, I don't know what the total cost was.
Sorry, I don't, I don't know what it is. We can give you that number.
Okay, I suppose our law office spent quite a bit of time on it also.
Uh, yes, we did.
Is the city gonna?
I mean, I attended most of the meetings, a couple of the meetings, and had a number of conversations with Mr. Fortelli.
Is the city gonna pay part of the attorney's fees? I know that Lee said they were going to piggyback off our agreement and use our documents, so I was, I know the Board of Ed, you know, that would be just a pass-through if we did that, so what I was wondering, are we going to bill the city for part of the Funk and Bolton bill and part of our bill?
I can certainly have that discussion, Joe. The, the reason that, that Lee engaged Funk and Bolton is that this, particularly when you get into power purchase agreements, it's really, really special.
I don't have any problem with engaging them, you know, that's fine. And I'm surely excited about the Solar City Agreement, but I guess what I'm wondering, are we doing legal work for, and paying for legal work?
I'll certainly look at that, that's a good point. I, I know, I know that we had, I had some discussions with Lee way back when we engaged Funk and Bolton. I've just got to refresh myself, I don't want to talk off the top of my head. That's a good point.
Okay, the other question I had, I got a call.
Want me to stay here?
Yeah, sure, I got a call, I think it was Friday. Apparently our website, the county's website, as far as the transparency, transparency portal, has not been updated since May for the expenses. Someone's concerned because they can't go online and look at the expenses.
I'll let Andy address that. That has to do with the end-of-year wind down, but I'll let Andy explain that.
Once we enter the end-of-the-year process, there are a lot of moving pieces, so we're not, we can't close, matter of fact, we just closed June last week, so we don't put reports out until the activity has stopped going into those months. So June was closed last week, the fiscal year was closed on Friday of last week, so that is the completion of the standard entries, the monthly entries. From an accounting standpoint, now we're in what's called Period 13, and there are accounting entries that are now made to fiscal year 14 that are needed to be, there are annual requirements that go in every year. For instance, we do an estimate for compensated absences, people who haven't used their vacation. That's a computation that can't take place until everything's been closed off. So now that the year is closed, we are working to put up the June report, but it'll still be a, an interim report, because the final, the audit results are not done, and these end-of-year entries have not been made. And that will be a true statement for July and August as well. As you recall, we, we're bringing Rose Department into the General Fund, and we're moving Recreation and Parks out of the General Fund. That actually takes place on 1 July, it doesn't take place on 30 June. So there are some balance sheet entries, and there's some accounting entries that have to be made for purchase orders being carried forward in July, so we can't close July and August until we've done those entries. So we will put up July reports and August reports with a caveat that they're interim reports pending this very unusual activity that we're going to do, moving roads in and pushing wrecking parks into a separate special governmental fund status. So that's the long version of why June is not up, that's every year, it's always delayed to be the fiscal year. This year, July, July and August will be delayed, well, we'll put it up, but it will be an interim report that we'll update when we're done with these unusual activities.
Also the question, oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
In terms of the normal, what I call revenue and expense operational activity, we can get that up. Andy's point is, is that the accounting isn't complete, but, but certainly, I understand the point that if a citizen wants to go in and see what were the ongoing operational expenditures in the month of June, July, and August, I'd like to get that.
It looks kind of bad when we, as much money as we spent on that website.
Understood.
I mean, a lot, I don't know what it was, but I remember, I remember.
Understood.
There was a big deal made of it. Also, will there be a way to look at the expenses from the landfill operation and also wrecking parks being, it's being moved out, will they be on that website in some?
Yes, we will put, we'll begin putting every department up.
Even the enterprise department, yeah.
This is a substantial amount of new work that is being absorbed.
Okay.
Those, those reports are, have to be run by, each one has to be run by somebody.
You've got to admit, in an election year, it looks pretty bad when you're four months behind of putting expenses on a, on a website, so. I think that was a concern of the citizen that called me.
Yeah, point taken.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Any other?
I think I've stirred up enough.
Okay, all right, any other Council comments today? No? Okay, for my present comments, just in regards to the Solar City, you know, I'm a, I'm a big proponent of collaboration between the county and the city, and, you know, we piggyback off, and Ed can correct me if I'm wrong, but we piggyback off contracts regularly, and I don't believe we've ever been asked to pick up the tab for the work that went into that original contract between the original parties. And just as a reminder, point, point of clarification, all city residents are also Wycomico County taxpayers, so I hate to draw those battle lines there. So with that being said, can I have a motion for adjournment, followed by open work session on the presentation of the expansion of the 100 Parker Sports Complex filed by lunch, followed by the open work session on the Board of Ed, followed by a closed work session on litigation.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We'll take five.